Okay, we will now call our July 27, 2020 special board meeting to order entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda. It's moved by Chris Frazier, second by
Kate Darby.
Kate Darby, okay, Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Green? Ms. Green? Mr. Hollencher?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the CCSD Safe School Restart Plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Mack, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thanks.
I can barely hear you.
You can barely hear me?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to turn my voice somewhere.
Okay, thanks. As Maggie shares the slides, I will thank all of you and everyone else in the community in our school system and the volunteers, parents, others who've given feedback and many people spent time trying to help us look at the advantages and disadvantages of various options and find a way to start back that is in the best interest of all parties involved. So, the only difference in this slide from what you saw last week was the addition of the picture of the Back to Business book, which has been completed. We kept talking about our partnership with MUSC and their expansion of their Back to Business program into school, Back to Business for Schools, the Safe School Restart. And you'll see that both the MUSC and the Charleston County Schools District logo are on that publication. It's about 130 pages long, so it's no small effort, and it outlines in a great deal of specificity what constitutes a safe restart. The first slide I want to talk about today reminds all of us of what we are required to have in our proposal. Our plan will not be approved if we don't have these components in it. So, the first component is a parent choice for in-person for students. The guidelines that were issued said that the districts are encouraged to offer five-day-a-week face-to-face instruction when it's safe to do so. Charleston County is offering temporary remote option as our primary mode of starting with an in-person option for some students, and I'll say a little bit more about that after, but we have to have some in-person option in our plan. So, we're suggesting that we would offer in-person to a small number of students if the parents, if the involved, and the medical experts who've looked at a particular site and looked at the metrics for that site concur. And of course, if our COVID-19 rate in you to fall over the next couple, two to four weeks, as they have in the past couple of weeks. So, that's our first option. We included in the board document parental choice form that we're thinking of sending out tomorrow, depending on the board's vote. We actually would spend the next five days enrolling students in whatever option parents would choose. The timeframe has to be included. If we're not able to start in an in-person for all students, five days a week, we have to include a timeframe that would explain how quickly we will do that. So, we propose revisiting the metrics officially with the staff twice a month, every two weeks. We actually look at the metrics every day, but every two weeks we would do another analysis and then bring that to the board once. So, the district are going to convert from the remote start that will be for most parents to more in-person. Parents would have a 20-day note should they desire it, so that we can make that transition. The second option that we're required to offer is the virtual option for all students. We talked a lot about that the last time we met. If you're a student in elementary school, that would be a commitment for nine weeks at a time. If you're a student taking a high school course as an eighth grader or a high school student, it would be a semester commitment to total virtual delivery. Carolyn Belcher explained that the curriculum for those programs has been developed in consideration with experts. Some of them are purchased, or the courses, the curriculum, is purchased from Florida Virtual School. It'd be delivered by Charleston County teachers with expertise in online delivery. So, the first three components are: we must offer in-person, we must offer virtual, and we must present a timeframe for how often we will consider the metrics. The fourth requirement is that we have to take some steps to make sure that whatever offering we provide is a higher quality than we were able to offer despite all of our best efforts this past spring. So, our teachers worked like the Dickens this past spring, many of them late into the evenings responding to parents and children whenever it fit children's schedule or parents' schedule. They worked long, long hours, and I don't want to discount that at all. But the district, we weren't able to give them a consistent learning management system so that they could tell which students had been online and which had not consistently. It wasn't easy to collect the homework, so we've done a lot to improve the virtual option. And then finally, we're required to offer, not as part of the restart plan, but as part of the legislation, we're required to offer five additional days. Those days have to be in-person for students in 4K through grades eight. The way this works is that's five additional days paid for teachers. If a teacher feels uncomfortable and doesn't want to come to work, they are not paid for the five extra days. If they're comfortable and are willing to come to work to meet with students and their parents in very small groups, then they're paid for coming to work those days. So, those are the hired components. There's no need for us to submit a plan that doesn't have those components, and we must offer at least a few students the option to have some face-to-face instruction. So, the next thing I'd like to talk about is the feedback that we've received regarding the plan since we published it a week before last and had the first reading on it last week. As you know, we've met with teacher representatives, we've heard from lots of teachers and parents, we met with the task force, we met with the legislative delegation. A fairly broad-based group of community members had an opportunity to provide input, and these were the major themes. First of all, the metrics. People wanted us to be more specific about the metrics that we will follow and the frequency of monitoring. The options. When the enrollment form is released, it was clear that parents wanted a description of each option and information about the health and safety protocols that would be in place. Communication. Parents and teachers asked that we increase communication, particularly to teachers and parents from the school level, and they asked that we release a video showing what a virtual showing a virtual tour of what a school day would be like when it's safe for children to return to school, what parents could expect. So, we think that that video, which Reverend Mack had asked us to work on quite a while ago, will be ready by the end of this week. In the extent possible, have the same teacher delivering the remote instruction as would deliver the classroom instruction. So, that might not be possible in the total K-12 virtual school, but for very remote, we think that that it's very likely that we be able to make sure that we have that continuity. Also, a few parents asked when we move from temporary remote to precincting the number of children who can come to school in-person, if we could give them some additional time depending on their family conditions are, that we try to do that. The calendar. Just as soon as possible, involve teacher and parent representatives in working out the calendar for the rest of the year. If we start September 8th, how might we rethink some of the calendar days so that children aren't in school clear through the end of next? If that could be avoided and if it by that time might be safe for families to be able to travel together to see other family members. Cohort groups, small groups, pods. Virtually, everyone wanted to make sure that when we do offer in-person instruction for students, that we serve students in small groups, in cohort groups. We try to keep those students together all day long if we can, reduce the amount of movement throughout the building for any small group of students. We believe we can, we believe we can do that. Certainly, for any restart that we would attempt early on, there would be very small classroom groups of children. Just because we could have 24 students in a classroom with the Plexiglas dividers, we wouldn't do that. We would not have more than 50% of the children who could possibly be in a classroom at a time, envisioning eight, 10, 12 students at most in a classroom as we get started. For substitutes, we need to increase the number of substitutes and make sure that substitutes are trained in both the classroom instruction and the online instruction in case it's necessary for them to cover the remote instruction temporarily. Scheduling assignments. As soon as possible, teachers want a whole lot more details than they have right now about things like the class assignments, what kinds of schedule they'd be on, other expectations such as the frequency with which they would need to report to school to be in contact with one another in school, or able to meet while socially distanced in teaching teams to talk about how they'll divide students to deliver instruction, that sort of thing. Teachers definitely want to be included at their school levels when the principal is brainstorming different options of how to work out particular logistics for a school. And then the category of susceptibility, giving assurance that we'll shield both students who are fragile, our families who are fragile, and then in addition, making sure our teachers feel comfortable, that our employees feel comfortable if they've had, if they've been exposed or supposed to quarantine, or if they're just really frightened of coming to work, that we don't force people to come back into the workplace and that they know that there is a safe structure for them. In particular, those who've been asked to quarantine because we don't want anyone feeling pressured to return to work before it's safe for them to do so. Restart mode is the one that is really hard to know until we actually ask parents how they would prefer to enroll. Some parents feel very strongly that their children need to be in school, and the benefits of having their children in school outweigh any risks that they see for their children. They understand, however, that we need to consider the risks to our employees. On the other hand, many people, and according to the feedback we got, actually, most parents and teachers feel that it's not quite safe to return to school yet. So, this is something about which parents were very deeply divided. Some want to come to school now, many do not. And then finally, there was emphasis on making sure that we have all the safeguards in place that we can possibly think of to put in place, anything that's reasonable, and certainly everything that's recommended by CDC and DHEC. Also, many people mentioned that while the American Academy of Pediatrics has publicized well their feeling that children need to be back in school, that the school district needs to take into consideration the health and well-being of our employees. So, we will try to do that at every step of the way, not asking anyone to come back and be face-to-face with children if they don't feel comfortable doing that yet. We certainly understand that. So, moving on then to look at the metrics. The metrics that DHEC uses are actually based on three criteria. The incidence rate for 100,000 people who populate an area, the trend in recent incident rates, and the percent of people who are testing who are tested positive. DHEC updates that database weekly, and they change their ratings for an area or their high, medium, and low category, I believe, every two weeks. So, as of mid-July, Charleston was rated high in all three of those areas. We expect to see some improvements because the infection rates have been declining in our area. So, as the next couple of slides show, when we look at the Charleston County cases for July, we had some spikes in the middle of the month. This takes us up to yesterday, and we see that people are beginning to heed the procedures that everyone has been asked to take. So, we're seeing a really pretty impressive decline in cases when we look on a day-by-day case, day-by-day count of the cases in Charleston County. The next slide shows the 14-day trend. So, if we average two weeks at a time, we can see that that line has begun a downward trend. We do seven-day averages as well, and when you average by seven days, that downward trend looks even more promising. So, we've gone from an infection rate that at one time was almost at 25% down to 15%, 16%, 17%, depending on the day. So, we're making a lot of progress. Let's hope it continues. And when I talk about bringing children back in-person, that is contingent on the continued downward trend that we have seen recently. So, we just want to mention in the next slide that the community has a big role to play. The former director of Centers for Disease Control and the two former secretaries of education under both Republican and Democratic presidents had published an article a couple of weeks ago that talked about the community's role, and they emphasized that the single most important thing we can do to get children back in school doesn't actually lie with schools, it lies with the community, reminding people of the three: wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance from people. They also emphasize that it's important for communities to have adequate testing, effective isolation procedures, that we have complete contact tracing in place, and that we have supportive quarantine measures. And that's what I was saying about the need to make sure that our people feel comfortable if they need to quarantine without threat of losing their job or losing pay. We think that the policies that the board has put in place will do that. So, they talk about the fact that if the virus is exploding in a community, one should not reopen schools. But when you begin to see that the virus is under control and that trend continues for a period of time, then communities should consider reopening school on a very small scale to watch what happens and take every precaution possible, and then start out very, very small, start slowly, and expand over time. So, the next slide, how do we propose to start? Our goal, as everyone knows, is to serve as many as possible in-person as soon as we can. The medical experts will advise regarding how many students we can serve in-person at any given time. That could be 0% of students, or it could be up to 100%. That's, we wouldn't propose opening any site for any students unless we have gotten the go-ahead from our local medical experts. And as I've said many times, DHEC and MUSC have been marvelous about working with and shooting straight when they think that something we're proposing is not in the best interest of the community, children, or our employees. As I mentioned, if we can start with a very small number of students in-person September 8th, we would like to do that. We have children whose parents are desperate for them to be able to come back to school, and I'll give you a couple of examples. Younger children who are developmentally delayed, whose developmental issues are are more easily impacted while they're young, are desperate for their children to be able to get back to school and work with teachers. And we have some teachers of those children who are willing to come back and work with the children in the school setting. They would much rather do that than go into homes and work with children. There are parents who, for other reasons, who have children who are enrolling in an AP course, and they're really hoping that their child will be able to get into a college and get some credit, really want their child to be face-to-face for that AP course. We have a few teachers willing to do that. So, I'm not talking about large numbers of children, but if when we ask our parents their enrollment preferences, then we ask our teachers their preferences, we could make a few matches to allow an in-start September 8th, providing the rate of cases continues to fall, we would like to do that. Having said that, for the most part, we anticipate opening in two modes. One will be temporary remote. These parents who know that eventually they want their children to return to classrooms this year, but they're not comfortable yet until our case, outbreak caseloads have deteriorated more than declined more than they have now, not deteriorated, declined more than they have now. And then those who know for certain that they do not want their children back in school for at least nine weeks or a semester, and they would enroll in the virtual academy. So, I think I talked about the fact that we'll monitor the data and report to the board as frequently as you want, but at least monthly, so that you would have an opportunity to change your decisions about the operating mode. We will give parents, starting tomorrow, the chance to indicate their enrollment option. This is different from a survey where we're just asking people to make a guess. We, starting tomorrow, and hopefully hearing from most parents online by Friday, which of these enrollment options would you prefer? Again, we included a draft of what that enrollment form might look like in the board documents. And then finally, starting tomorrow or Wednesday, we will be contact, begin contacting every one of our teachers and other employees who support instruction to see what their intents and needs are, what their preferences are, to see if it's possible to make matches. So, the next step in terms of, next steps in terms of our timeline sort of look like this. Since July 24th, we met with the task force, we met with teachers, principals, the legislative delegation, and we had numerous meetings with various school faculties, individually with several parents who contacted us. We've talked with other community leaders about their plans. So, we've done a lot in the past week to try to get us to this, to the point of making a wise recommendation tonight. Tonight, the board will approve a safe restart plan, and then we also have to get state approval. And I reviewed with you the elements that have to be in there before we can get state approval. State approval then would allow us to submit our COVID-19, our CARES Act funding plan to get the reimbursement for a lot of the precautions that we're taking to try to make sure our schools are as safe as they can possibly be for those students and teachers who are able to return. July 28th through August 1st, I just outlined, we'll find out teacher and parents' preferences. Then August 4th to the 10th, we have this intensive work to try to match what parents want, what the medical experts say is safe in any one site, and in any particular site, and what our teacher and other employees' preferences may be. August 11th to the 17th, we have professional development and some in-class work, classroom work designed for teachers. That's when their school year officially starts. They have that one work week so that they can learn the new online platforms that we have in place and be trained in the new curriculum that has been mentioned to the board in the past. August 19th would be the final day to notify parents of any changes that we might have to make in the plan that the board approves tonight. The only thing I can think of that would change that plan would be if, for some reason, we would see an increase in cases rather than a decrease. Then, August 18th to the 28th, we have to complete the student-teacher groupings for the remote, the virtual academy, and any in-person that we're cleared to offer. We need to assist families with the digital devices, making parents and children know what's expected, how to get online, how to download the lessons. And as you know, we had planned to set up those devices so that students are able to come to school even one day a week. They could download their lessons, and they wouldn't actually have to have internet at home in order to be able to work on their devices. We'll determine the date for the in-person meetings with high school students. We don't, that's not built into that week before Labor Day. Pre-K, 4K through eight teachers are paid to come for that time. High school teachers are not receiving pay for the state, so we have to figure out a time for high school teachers to meet in-person with students that they may be teaching, whom they may be teaching virtually, and then get all those schedules in line so that we don't have very many parents and students coming in school at a time. So, I've mentioned August 31st to September 4th, we would have small groups of parents and students coming into elementary schools each of those days. And September 8th would be the first day of school. We think that Ori, Georgetown, Dorchester 2 and 4, Collin, Beaufort, and perhaps now Berkeley Counties are all aligned on that September 8th start date. So, the final slide contains our recommendation, which is to approve the state's Safe Restart Plan. Charleston County Schools will offer those two options that were required. An in-person school would begin September 8th. For the most part, this will be delivered by temporary at-home remote instruction for those few students who will be able to come in-person. That, whether or not we offer any in-person on September 8th, even to very small groups of students, are subject to the sustained, continuous downward trend in the COVID-19 rates that we've begun to see in our area. The second option is the K-12 Virtual Academy. As we've mentioned, it's a nine-week commitment for elementary, a semester commitment for those taking high school courses. Both temporary and virtual require that we have in-person meetings with students and parents before we start. If a parent doesn't want to come to school, doesn't want to bring a child into the school setting, we can get permission to do that meeting by Zoom, but that's the parent's decision. The school district has to offer to see the student in-person. The in-person presence at school may occur for students and teachers who are comfortable with this option. We wouldn't expect to see even 25% of our parents want that option or our teachers want it, nor would we expect that medical professionals would approve that for us at this time. That's determined again by the medical metrics and the logistical considerations at each site. Finally, we'd have to see a downward trend in COVID-19 rates over a 14-day period. For the board, we'd consider making any changes whatsoever in the operating mode. We review the data every two weeks as a staff and give the board an opportunity to look at the data and reconsider their decisions at least monthly, unless there were some situation that warranted an immediate action on the board's part. So, that's a summary of the plan, the modifications we made based on the feedback we received and our request to the board, so that we can move forward determining who wants what and then solidify where we think we are, so that we, when we meet with you at the August committee, the whole meeting, we can bring you more specifics. Reverend Mack?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Now I can.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pulsway, for the presentation on the Safe Restart Plan. Okay, thank you, Dr. Postaway for the presentation on the uh safe restart plan. Before we get into any questions, I I just move that we accept the plan as presented by Dr. Postaway.
Second.
All right, so properly move in second, I'm gonna ask now board members if you have any Questions, um I do ask that you, if you do, I'm gonna allow each board member two questions each, so we can go around to everyone. And hopefully, any additional questions you may have may get answered through another question by presenting by another board member. So Reverend Collins? Reverend Collins? Okay, uh we'll move on, I'll come back Reverend Collins, Mr. Garrett? Okay, Reverend Collins, you're there? No question, Mr. Garrett, okay, Reverend Collins?
Yeah, can I use Taj's time?
No, sir, just ask your two questions.
I I have five questions.
Okay, go ahead and ask your two questions and we'll come back to you.
All right, I'm not just asking for me because there are a lot of parents and teachers that want to know what I'm asking. I like to get them all answered today in some kind of form. Uh the the first slide, uh you pulled up Dr. Postaway, the first page. And uh you went toward toward the bottom and talked about uh, I think you're working five days a week or something like that. Want about the employees coming in?
Dr. Postaway, you're muted.
Thank you.
It's the late days that he's talking about, I think.
Yeah.
The five days for four K through eight. Parents, students, teachers.
Yeah, uh I I didn't quite, I didn't quite understand what you're saying about uh If they came to work or didn't come to work, what were you saying?
Okay, so these are five additional days of pay. They're they're not in the teacher's normal contract, it's an opportunity for five additional days of pay. Required by the legislature that we offer these days. The State Department has said that if the teacher is comfortable coming to work. The teacher and the supportive instructional staff who are needed for those days, if they're comfortable coming into the school to meet with Very small groups of students at a time, uh maybe two or three students at a time, then they get paid for those days. If they're not comfortable coming in, then they they don't have to come in and they're not paid for the days.
I I understand, that's good enough for that. I remember I was just saying they said uh, all my questions are pretty short and simple.
All right, just go ahead and ask one more question Reverend Collins, but we'll come back to you, I promise you.
Dealing with the uh inside the classroom. Is it uh all students seats will be six feet apart unless plexiglass dividers are used? So when I saw the uh slide and uh the picture I saw, the Mr. Burrowie presented. The dividers uh, I was I'm assuming around three foot tall, I think, around three feet tall. But the kids are about maybe maybe two feet apart or so, if uh somewhere in that ballpark. So I'm concerned that uh the children being that close together and and just the plexiglass, it's only between them on one side. If they sneeze or cough. I don't know how they how the next person be protected, but they're still fairly close, the the germs can go up in the air. Everything can go down low, this, it has like a maybe a false sense of security. A- and then also the teacher in the classroom, what protects her from the contact with the children? How she say from uh other children, is there some type of wall divider or is a glass in front of her station? What divides it, is children from the teachers also?
So I I will say that we would not anticipate opening school with with a student in every single one of those slots. We think that it's important to build the plexiglass dividers for when we can bring more students back. But when we open up, we wouldn't have students seated in every single one of those seats. As far as the health considerations and the what it takes for DHEC on and MUSC to approve those dividers. I'm gonna ask Mr. Burrowie to speak to that because with them directly.
So Reverend Collins, it it all depends upon when when and where students come back. As Dr. Postaway mentioned, under the current conditions wherein we wouldn't bring a student back in every every cubicle, I'll call it, uh between the divider. So as we get closer to school returning and when we evaluate that at every step. We'll talk with MUSC and DHEC to determine if the protocols we plan are adequate. So that that will take into account exactly what you're just saying. Will the teachers have to have different account, different protections? Will the students have to have additional protections? We won't make that determination until we get to a point where we're gonna start to bring kids back to school. So your your point is very valid. And and I would say that at this point, if we said, let's bring a kid back into every one of those divided areas. We could not do it without everybody wearing a mask the entire time. So it it all depends upon the numbers that are out there and that recommendation that we eventually receive from From our medical support and from DHEC.
Okay, Reverend Collins, we'll come back to you, I know you have some further questions, uh Ms. Jeffries?
Um I don't have any right now.
Okay, uh Mr. Hollenchet?
Hey, thank you, hey, Matt?
Yes.
Just um Couple of comments and and do what you want to do, it's just as um DHEC just released, we're in the twenty four percent high, twenty four point six percent high. And we're still high and cases are still climbing, so there's not, there's not a downward trend. Channel five just announced that four teachers or four care workers at Meminger Just tested positive for coronavirus. We have a teacher at Hersi in the test of care. So I'm just concerned, Dr. Matt, um that, you know, it's just a hard pill to swallow. And e- either way that we go, opening up schools partly, remotely. We're just in for some hard times, not just don't want to sugarcoat this and think that that uh that we put a good Put lipstick on this and it's gonna be a positive situation. Either way you go with this, it's gonna be something horrific, I pray for the best. But uh it doesn't look that way at this present time, that's all.
So just just keep in mind too, as well as we as we go along, uh as Dr. Postaway did mention, we will definitely continue Continue to monitor this every two weeks. And a a report will be given back to the board. So a- as we go along, as we move forward, there there they may potentially be opportunities, the way we have to come back and revisit. Should things worsen instead of getting better? So preferably, I I hope that things will will get better and not get worse, uh but as we move forward. Do you have any other further questions, Hollenchet?
No, I thank you Reverend Matt, that was it.
Okay, all right, um.
Oh, Reverend Matt, one more quick thing, sir. I did go visit um Dustin on Friday. Staff did a great job though with the dividers to separate the kids. The ingenuity behind that was excellent, Jeff, they did a great job. But again, you know, that's just one step. The detox, the uh the humidifier within the building to detox the building is also a great system, Reverend Matt.
Okay, great. So staff have been working very hard in trying to make sure that we Place uh measures in place that will 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 give us a safe start. So the plexiglass, the the filtering system, uh disinfecting uh the uh the cleaning of the buses. That all these different steps that have been put in place uh is part of the safety plan. So uh we're gonna keep keep chucking at it until we Until we we get to the point of where we're gonna have all our students back in school safely. All right, Ms. Green?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Okay, uh Mr. Frazier?
A couple of quick questions. There's two opportunities, I guess, where we either relax um the restrictions that we're talking about or we increase them. And I think I heard that we need to provide parents twenty days notice. I assume of one direction, but perhaps not the other, uh maybe Dr. Postaway could Illustrate that a little bit for everybody that's watching today.
Thank you, um if we were, we we will start out, we believe most parents will want some sort of virtual option to start out. If they've chosen the temporary virtual and we're switching, it it looks as though it's time to bring more children. We can bring more children back in the school. There will be some parents who aren't ready for their children to come back. So we want to give them a twenty day notice and that gives us time before we would actually bring children back. It gives time for parents to visit the school, it gives time for parents to make some other arrangements. If they don't want their children to come back virtual, it gives time, I think one of our legislators asked the other evening. To see if it's possible for a child to continue to work at home, um even if the school goes back in person, as long as a A student can keep up with the work. So in that instance, if we're bringing more children into this, we would want to give a twenty day notice. Even though um the an infection rate is increasing and we need to shut down something, we need to do that immediately.
Okay, so I guess, does that, would that, either of those require board action? Or both?
Closing does not require board action. If the governor issues the closing, if we see an increase in rates. Our assumption is it takes a quick call, the board members publicly announce as an emergency meeting, we give you the facts and you agree to close the school. We have the right to close it for maybe twenty four hours, but the board has to take action to close it longer than that.
Thank you, and I guess I'd just like to say, and I was looking at the MUSC website today, and there's a downward trend Actually in the green as it relates to infection, so I'm encouraged by that. But I would like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion, which is that We we in fact uh look at those numbers again on August the tenth uh to decide if those restrictions need to be relaxed or increased. Uh as a part of our evaluation as we go forward and consider such an August seventeenth Special call meeting if required at that time. So I don't know if that friendly amendment would be accepted, but I want to make sure we look at it in the light of day in two weeks.
Okay. All right, um Ms. Coates? And to answer your question, uh Mr. Frazier, uh yes?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I would just like, at some point before we vote, that Mr. Frazier clarified, I didn't entirely understand it, but I'm in agreement. I just want to know what it looks like and what it means. So if You said, Dr. Postaway, medical experts and get the go ahead from the medical experts. And earlier than that, you referenced the medical experts as MUSC and DHEC. Am I accurate that when you say medical experts, you were talking about Professionals at DHEC and doctors at MUSC, is that accurate?
That's accurate, more specifically, there are a team of physicians and um including an epidemiologist or two at MUSC And working with us consistently.
Okay, so anytime I hear the words medical experts, I can one hundred percent assume you mean DHEC and MUSC.
Yes, ma'am.
If if the numbers we have, let's just say, because I think I hadn't seen the numbers come out today. But with the incident rate, the percent testing positive and the trend from the day before yesterday to yesterday. If that flattened, if that remains exactly as it is today. And on September eighth, there have been literally no changes to those three metrics, will we open up buildings?
No, ma'am, not according to the motion, we have to see a downward trend for another two weeks.
And when you talked about a small number of students and teachers in agreement. Will there be some sort of um way that the board can understand the fidelity of that? So that we know there's a a very s- that that what we believe to be people who chose this are people who chose this and weren't Were encouraged to choose this, that's that's a concern that I have.
Um that's a good question, I I don't know that we've given it any thought, but I can see that What you would want is to make sure that someone doesn't feel coerced or feel uncomfortable saying, no, I don't really want to do this. So um let us about how to accomplish that, I see the point, I the point's well taken, actually.
Okay, Reverend Mac, I have maybe one more question, but that's my two, so continue the circle.
Well, uh just so we be consistent, let me get Reverend Collins back in and I'll come back to your question. All right, Reverend Collins? Reverend Collins?
Yes, sir. My mouth is a little bit slow today.
I'm sorry?
I said my mouth is, my mouth is slow, but my mouth is so fast.
Oh, okay, you you have you have a another question, Reverend Collins?
Yes, sir, so let let me say say this first. If uh If we don't have some type of barrier or protection for the teachers, they become a hotspot for the virus. So that Let's keep that in mind, staff and board members, that that's to be the number, they're they're most important, it has to be protected because because what the like gets on them, gets on the students, I'm guessing the students, gets on siblings and parents also. So the next question is According to the buses, the bus are playing, the seating for the buses. Uh last time, Mr. Burrowie, you said that you would have a one seat be one student, the next seat, two students, and the next seat, one student. Wearing a mask. So I have some concerns with the uh that plan because I don't see the kids being protected that way, because it's not six feet, they're all wearing a mask, but There's very little protection uh being basically shoulder to shoulder, waist to waist. So you don't have to answer, but just know that that way I don't have to waste a question on you, so don't ask, don't respond, but just work on it. But do answer this one. The face covering, the mask, when the students get into the classroom, get to their seating, get seated there. And they take their, they're allowed to take the mask off according to this plan. That is, is that DHEC's uh approval or MUSC's response that the kids take the mask off once they're in, once they're in their seat?
Mr. Burrowie?
We we would take their guidance on that, so again, with the numbers that we have right now, they would not approve that. The goal, the goal is that when we get to a point where the numbers are low enough, those medical professionals would support the idea Of wearing the mask into the classroom, if they go to the cafeteria, if they go to the bathroom, if they go to the bus. But once they're in that space, uh that they would allow that mask to be removed. That's that's our, that's our goal, again, with the numbers right we have right now, I do not believe they would support that.
Thank you.
Reverend Collins, does that conclude your questions?
For now.
Okay, uh Ms. Coates, I believe you had an additional question?
Um, so how do we get a hand, our hands on that MUSC playbook? And and when our parents and students, um it seems like there's specificity in that book and Everyone's asking for specificity, I think it solves two problems. We see what you see and it starts starts answering some of these questions, how soon can we see that book?
Now, Mr. Burrowie, you've been working with MUSC, I I think it may be public, but I don't, I don't want to answer that without your um response.
I I think they're waiting, they're waiting for us to say we're ready to go, they've given us a final copy, we just received that. If you can give us another day or so to review it to make sure that um we haven't, we have, we don't see any fatal flaws as far as things missing that we'd like added. I I don't see any reason why it couldn't be published, published this week.
And so then this question is actually for Mr. Frazier, um if I may. Mr. Frazier, can, in your amendment, is that what you're talking about? If this is approved tonight, there'd be like a uh, we'd go ahead and put a stopgap measure in to review on August tenth? And that could give us a chance to look at the playbook and maybe pump the brakes? Or what's your intention of that amendment regarding August tenth?
I just think it's important that we see that we've got a continued downward trend and that that remains and that every board member has an opportunity to react, whether things increase or not. I hadn't considered the playbook, but again, it gives us time to get more information, so.
But is it, is your amendment to approve or not approve the motion tonight and in your amendment, either way, still review on August tenth? If it's, if this thing is approved tonight, your amendment still says, let's take a look at this August tenth? And have a chance, okay, and have a chance to enter into another conversation at that point.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to make sure it's clear that if it passes tonight, this gives the district the uh the the ability to move forward with all the things that are necessary. Because if you look at the calendar, there's a whole lot to be done between now and then. So this in no way is to say we're gonna revisit the conversation. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the data so that if we need to make a change, we have an opportunity to do it. If cases spike over the next ten days and we show up on the tenth, I think we'd all agree that that would be something we'd need to talk about.
Okay.
Ms. Darby?
Yeah, can I, all right, so I want to just clarify, because I made the second on the motion. My understanding of what you're saying, Mr. Frazier, is that We vote in favor of the motion as it is, we are starting school on September eighth. The thing that we would be considering on August tenth would The thing that we would be considering on August 10th would be reviewing those 14 day numbers, making sure that we've got a downward trend. And if we don't, if we have a spike, then we might pull back on that in-person instruction that we're talking about starting on September 8th, right?
Exactly.
Got it. Okay, I just said, a teacher texts me and say, we've got to vote today. And yes, we're voting today, but we may have to tweak that by looking at those numbers. Okay, good. I'm good with that.
Reverend Mack, I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I asked a couple of meetings ago, and I think they were working on it. Substitutes, will they be trained in all of this? And what if there aren't enough when we finally have kids in the classroom?
Mr. Brigman, I know you've been working on that. Would you like?
Certainly, I can comment. Um, what we're proposing is that every school has a permanent substitute teacher. So we're working through that process now. So what that would look like, that the substitute teacher would be part of the staff of that school. And we'll continue to evaluate that, um, each month at this point in time. So those subs will be trained the same as the teachers.
That's a great solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further, uh, questions at this time now, I will call for the vote on, uh, the motion has been moved and seconded.
Reverend Mack.
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, because there was an amendment, can you restate the motion? There was a lot of discussion between your original motion and, and Mr. Frazier's amendment, just so we're all clear on what the motion is, please.
Yes, sir, I'll read it. Okay, uh, the motion is to approve the safe restart plan as presented. CCSD will offer two options. A, in-person school that will begin September 8th with actual in-person instruction, subject to sustained downward reduction in COVID-19 infection rates, or temporary stay-at-home remote instruction if parents prefer to start the school year in remote mode. Option B is the K-12 Virtual Academy, which entails a nine-week commitment for K-8 students and a semester commitment for high school students. Both temporary and virtual remote instruction will include intimate in-person check-ins with students by teachers. In-person student presence at school may occur for parents and teachers who are comfortable with this option. Not expected to exceed 20 to 25% of normal school capacity as determined by each school's current medical measures and logistical consideration. Charleston County must see a downward trend in COVID-19 rates over a 14-day period before the board will consider changing the operating mode. Data will be reviewed every two weeks by staff, monthly by board. Also, the board will review the trend again on August 10th. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Ms. Darby.
Thank you, Mr. Mack, Reverend Mack.
Thank you, thank you for that. All right, uh, Reverend Collins, how do you vote? Reverend Collins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, how do you vote?
Okay, so I would like to see us start, uh, virtually August 18th. But I know we're not working, moving towards that, but that's my goal, that we get prepared virtually unless we get far behind next June. But I, I'm gonna vote no, uh, for the plan, just for those reasons.
Okay, um, Mr. Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Green, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Hollandhead, how do you vote?
I still hold my vote of no.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jeffries, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Darby, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion carries 6-3.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Dr. Postaway and his staff for, uh, what you have presented and, and the steps that we are taking now to, uh, move forward. Uh, as we begin to monitor, as even more so as we go forward, we will, uh, continue to, uh, make any modification changes that may need, uh, to take place at that time.
Reverend Mack.
Next item, I'm sorry, Reverend Collins?
Uh, could I start the post away about, about this schoolwork assignment? Would it be the same for everybody, virtual or in-person?
I'm sorry, said it again?
Will the, will the schoolwork, the school assignments, with the work for the students, be the same whether the kids are in school or doing virtual? Will the work be the same?
I, I don't think so, Reverend Collins. With the curriculum would be the same. I mean, we have the same standards, the curriculum is the same, but the, the, the actual work will, will be as close as possible, but no, I, I would hesitate to say that it would be the same. Even in a normal year, two classroom teachers might approach the, the work, the assignments a little differently. So to be on the safe side, I'm going to say no, sir. I, I don't think so.
Okay, okay. Uh, okay, we will move along with the agenda items. Uh, next up on the list is the Sales Tax Extension Program.
Yes, Trevor Mack, I can go ahead and provide a quick overview. Uh, I did want to first, uh, thank Mr. Hollandhead for his comments about the dividers and, and that credit goes to Mr. Krabs and his facility management, uh, team. Uh, they've done a phenomenal job in the design, uh, acquiring the, the materials and, and beginning to put that together. So, um, he, he and his team have done an amazing job with that and really have set the standard for the, for the state. Uh, mov- moving on to this, uh, this item, uh, Sales Tax Extension Program Funding Profile, uh, and the Projects List with a Phase Five Program. Uh, this was approved by the Audit and Finance Committee on June 30th. I'll provide a very, uh, brief overview of the slides that are, that are in your, in your packet. Um, it's important that we determine that funding breakdown, uh, so we then can determine, uh, how much we want to allocate toward projects that leads to the Projects List, that leads to the referendum list. Uh, so with that, we received a funding projection from our financial advisors, PFM, at the end of last month. Uh, it shows that we can allocate about $709 million over the six-year, uh, sales tax program, which is an extension of the current sales tax, not a, not a new tax, but an extension. This anticipates a 3% growth, sets aside, uh, money for a 5% contingency as well as, uh, program management and interest payments. So 709 million to break up among capital maintenance, capital in, information technology, and capital, uh, programs or capital construction. Uh, in keeping with the board's, uh, philosophy and approach toward making sure that we work to fund capital maintenance, uh, we immediately, uh, wanted to set aside a significant portion of those resources to capital maintenance. And we're proposing an increase from the current sales tax program of 109 million to 270 million. That's 45 million a year, uh, to capital maintenance. And this is to attack a backlog of maintenance, things that we do not have funding for, things that are, will be sitting on the shelf. Uh, as of 2022, that backlog is going to be 267 million. So by putting 45 million in, plus the 10 million you allocate normally and the fixed cost of ownership money, we're really, uh, taking a big bite out of that backlog of, of maintenance. From an IT perspective, we're proposing a reduction from what we have in the current sales tax program from 34 million to 24 million. That $10 million less over six years. Uh, we, we feel very confident that we'll have the resources necessary to recapitalize our system. Between the type of systems Mr. Naraki is buying now and addressing the service life of those programs, we believe that that $10 million, uh, reduction will do no harm. That leaves $415 million for construction. And that's down from 513 million, uh, from the previous program. Uh, and that leads to the Projects List, which I'll turn over to Mr. McNeil to provide a quick overview on that, uh, before we come back on a recap. So, Mr. McNeil, uh, why don't you quickly review the, the Projects List that is put forward to the board?
So as discussed by Jeff, there's a $415 million that is planned to go towards capital projects. The Projects List is divided, um, from funded to unfunded. 16 projects are funded. Um, and then the other 15 are unfunded. The, uh, projects are not listed in any priority order, nor by constituent district, but rather by grade level, starting from the youngest going up to the oldest. Um, the 16 projects that are recommended for funding are based on the funding profile, um, as mentioned. And, uh, the sales tax, again, would, would start the collections in 2023. Uh, staff plans to return to the board to recommend the execution order of the project and believe the appropriate term used to describe the, that order is called ways. So we'll come back at a later time to talk to you about the order in which the projects will roll out. Um, if you have any questions, uh, I'm, I'm ready to answer those, but if not, I'm going to pass it back over to Don, um, to discuss the resolution.
Um, Mr. McNeil, it's, um, it's Joyce Green. Uh, good luck to you leaving us.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Green.
I completely disagree. I hope you are miserable and terribly unhappy.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, I really feel that way too, but you know, I need to send me.
She's just, where in Virginia?
Virginia, this is in Philadelphia.
Philadelphia, I'm sorry, that's right.
Lucky then.
Well, thank you. It's been great. I've had a lot of fun here.
We don't know what to do with our, without our younger, cuter Jeff.
All right, Mr. Burrow, who's up next?
I, I don't think I could beat that. Um, we, we do want to recognize, uh, Mr. McNeil for the work that he's done here for nearly four years. Uh, this, this current year that we're in right now was the highest work in place that we've had in this entire building program, uh, since it began around, began around 2000. And, uh, Mr. McNeil has executed that phenomenally. So, uh, we, we are going to miss somebody who's done great work for us that, that'll last for years and years and years. So, uh, with that, subject to any questions, I'll, I'll turn it back over, uh, to you, Reverend Mack, um, to, to close out the item.
Okay.
I'm moved to approve the Sales Tax Extension Program.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Garrett and, uh, seconded by, um, Ms. Darby. So, uh, before we go right into the votes, I was going to, uh, but we got into the discussion prior to, but I was going to talk about, uh, Mr. McNeil's, uh, last, probably last presentation, uh, to us, uh, and to this board and to, uh, congratulate him on his, uh, his new position as the COO, uh, in Philadelphia School System. So we definitely will, will miss the, the work that you have done, uh, here. Uh, and, uh, and we know that you do great, great, great work in Philadelphia. Uh, so, uh, so again, congratulations to you and job well done and, and, uh, and to, to your new endeavors.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Wait, Mr. Reverend Mack?
Um, I want, I was waiting, you asked us for questions.
Okay, yes, sir, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Uh, sorry to hear you leaving too, sir. We dearly miss you. The items that are listed and unfunded, uh, on the bottom of all the lists, are those a hopefuls or why are they, why are they listed? What's, what's the reality with those unfunded projects? A lot of them are here in North Charleston. So what's, what's the reality of those?
So just like in the past, for all the projects that have been listed in the unfunded category, there is an opportunity if these sales tax projections exceed, um, the amount that we, um, that Jeff discussed earlier, that we can possibly bring some of the projects up from the unfunded, um, category into the funded category. An example of that is what we've done with Hershey in the past. Hershey was on the unfunded projects list, uh, for Phase Four, and there was money, um, assigned to, to Hershey when we started looking at our sales tax projections and moved that up to the funded, um, category.
Yeah, there was, there was somebody allocated for Hershey, uh, originally, but, but it got increased, uh.
Reverend Collins, if I could just add two, two things to Mr. McNeil's answers. Uh, nu- number one is that there are still more District Four projects above the line than any other constituent district in this, in this proposed sales tax program. And when we look back over the course of time, we closely monitor the funding expenditures across all the constituent districts, uh, since, since this program began, and that, and that is in the master plan. And both, uh, District Two and District Four, which has the most number of students, roughly has the same amount of resources put toward it out of this program, um, across that period of time. So we closely make sure that the resources are allocated, uh, as, as fairly as possible across all of, uh, all the constituent districts.
I think, you know, Cindy and I talked about that earlier today. She basically said the same thing, uh, for Lasson, Lasson Elementary, uh, this, I guess, I guess it's the ballot language. I'm looking at a referendum language. It says, uh, replace, uh, wait a minute, maybe I got the right school. Your design, instruct, uh, replace the Lasson Elementary School. But then I saw another place said, uh, but the childcare center, yeah, Lasson, uh, eight, no, like, eighteen, says renovate Lasson Elementary School for a new early education and family development center. So are we talking about two different, two different locations and projects? Or one location, uh, with two different buildings? What are we talking about there? The Lasson Elementary, the school and the, and the early childhood and family development center. One is number 18 and that one is number, uh, nine.
Yeah, yes, sir. So this gives the Board of Trustees the most flexibility by having those two separate. The, the intention when we discussed this project last fall, last summer with Mission Critical, was to build Lasson in a different location. But by leaving it this way on the referendum, uh, proposed for the referendum and in this Projects List, allows us to make a recommendation to the board. If land comes through at Ingleside, we, we could recommend it be built there. Uh, but because the board approved land to be purchased adjacent to Lasson, we could build it there. By having the early ed centers as a separate line item, it gives us that same, that same flexibility. If Lasson is built in another location, if we move that project above the funding line for the early ed center, that can be built on the Lasson property. So when we laid this out, we thought it was the best way to give the board the most flexibility, uh, as well as the best way to support the taxpayers with these two projects.
So the same money for both?
No, it would be separate money. Right now, the Lasson Elementary is proposed to be funded and the, and the la- and the early ed center would be unfunded at this time.
Okay, just last, lastly, uh, the $90 million to do, uh, Lambs Elementary and Creative Family, early, early childhood learning and family center at $90 million. Uh, it's quite a price tag and all of you have to answer it or not, but that's really the most discouraging thing I see there because we have three school buildings already. And our early childhood is already, uh, under capacity. You know, we had, we had space at Mary Ford, Space Station Cora. And I, I look at, uh, places like Burger King, McDonald's, McDonald's is expanding, while Burger King is closing out, uh, some of their location because, because of the economy, they're not doing as well. So I don't know how we feasibly expand a program that's not really prospering. Even the survey we took said that, uh, that was, that said that the kids that came into our early childhood program, that they are, they do worse than the kids that don't enter to one or tend elsewhere. So how do you expand something that's broken at $90 million? That's my last question, I think.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you pointing out, uh, that project. It is, it is a steep price tag. Um, we, we're hopeful and we're optimistic. The board voted on the last, last, uh, fall to start the early ed center at Mary Ford. We're hoping that that new approach, uh, that expansion of that program, uh, leads us to success across the district. This would be, uh, a next move, uh, in, in the direction to the north. So what this gives us, an opportunity to do at Lambs, is to build a new elementary school that combines Goodwin, Lambs, and Hunley Park, and that was voted on by the board last year. Having the early ed piece allows us to either build, um, a new early ed center on that same campus so that it's a one-stop shop for all young, all parents, whether they're kids in pre-K or K or they're in fifth grade, they would have one stop. If the funding is not there and we, and we want to come back and the board says, look, let's just spend 65 million there. Let's keep one of the older buildings, Hunley Park or Goodwin, as the early ed center for those three schools. That could still be done. Uh, again, this gives us some flexibility, uh, to build a, a new building on that campus to replace two existing buildings that are, that were built in the late 50s and early, early 60s, uh, Hunley Park and, Hunley Park and Goodwin.
Okay, Jeff, thank you for, thank you for your response. Uh, Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Question.
Uh, Mr. Hollandhead, go ahead.
Just briefly, and, and just to make sure for the general public, this goes for a referendum, Reverend Mack, on the ballot for November 3rd, correct?
I'm sorry, said it again?
No, for clarification of the motion, this goes on the ballot for November 3rd?
Uh, the, the next motion, item 2C, yes.
Yeah, 2C, okay, this is the one, this is extending the one that we currently have, correct?
Right.
All right, I'm just, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Coates, how do you vote? Ms. Coates?
I'm coming, yes.
Okay.
So this is to approve the Sales Tax Extension Funding Profile and Capital Programs Budget List, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so is everyone clear on, on the motion?
That means this is to approve the list. The next vote would be to approve putting it on the referendum.
Correct. Is everyone clear? So Ms. Coates, is your vote still yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, Reverend Collins?
And, and by voting yes, we, we agree that this is just a list, not a priority, uh, other than Hershey should be a priority. That's been waiting a long time.
Will be the priority.
Yeah, Hershey should go first, uh, uh, even though I agree with the 90 million. Yeah, Hershey should go first, uh, uh, even though I read with the $90 million, I vote yes, because I can't take, I can't take one item out, uh, without doing all of them. So I have to, I have to vote yes. I am the tide.
Okay, uh, Mr. Frazier?
I vote yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hollandhead?
I vote yes for the list.
Uh, Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion carries unanimously. Item 2C?
Reverend Mack, I make a motion that we approve putting the Sales Tax, uh, list of projects on the ballot.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, moved by Ms. Coates, seconded by Mr. Garrett. Are there any questions?
Reverend Mike?
Uh, Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I think it's important for, uh, Mr. Kennedy to talk about how this, um, furthers our effort to eliminate the long-term debt for the district, because these are projects that need to be done. And, um, this is a way of funding them without a tax increase. So I, I think it would be important for him to share that with the people watching our, uh, broadcast this evening.
Okay, all right. Uh, any further questions? All right, uh, Mr. Kennedy, are you, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, yes, I'm here. So prior to, prior to fiscal year, uh, 2010, uh, the construction of new schools, the renovation of existing schools here in the district, uh, where those, uh, projects were funded through, um, debt, and so we issued, um, uh, bonds, uh, to go into debt to be able to raise funds, to be able to, uh, cover the cost of, uh, construction and renovation. Uh, as a result, we have, uh, I don't have the exact number in my, uh, on top of my head, uh, but roughly, let's say, $800 million or two, uh, so that's still an outstanding debt. Uh, we have a plan in place that by the, by the year 20, 30, 10 years from now, that we would, the district, the census would be debt-free if we continue to pay off the debt and not go into an additional debt. And the way we would not go into additional debt because beginning in 2010, uh, was the first year that we had a Sales Tax referendum to raise revenue to, um, uh, to construct buildings, school buildings. And, uh, so we had the first referendum in 2010, in 2014, and we had a continuation of that one cent, uh, sales tax, not an increase, just a continuation. And this resolution does the same thing. It, it authorizes a one, one-cent, uh, Sales Tax, uh, extension of the 2014, uh, approval. And so if we were able to do that, we're able to raise another, um, substantial, substantial amount of funds to be able to continue to both, um, construct new school buildings as well as to avoid, um, the, uh, uh, the backlog of maintenance that, that school districts find themselves in. And we can do that at the same time that we reduce, uh, reduce, uh, our debt.
Okay.
I think it's important for all, everybody that's watching us to understand that this has, if they look at their tax bill, the capital portion of, um, what every taxpayer, not just 6%, but homeowners all pay towards this. And if we maintain this program, those will be eliminated, and, um, we need to keep the long view on the projects.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Good, all right, you're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, the motion was made by Ms. Coates, uh, seconded by Mr. Garrett. Uh, Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hollandhead?
Uh, I vote no.
No, okay. Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Darby? Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I vote yes, and that motion carries 8-1.
Good job.
All right, board members, uh, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, engaging and participating in today's meeting. Um, be safe, and, uh, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
The move.
The move.
The move. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a safe day.
Thanks.
Thank you.